We're going to go ahead and get started with our early, uh, early work session. Uh, this session is being recorded today. Uh, we want the public to be able to see the budget presentation by Dr. Bracy. So, uh, we are being recorded for the early session, uh, this week. And we do have three items, so we want to go ahead and allow Dr. Bracy to come forward first. He and Dr. Falk to give us his, uh, presentation of needs. So, y'all give your attention to Dr. Bracy. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, um, thank you Chair, and good evening to everyone.
Thank you, evening.
Vice Chair Atkinson and members of the board. I'm honored to be here with you tonight to share my 2024-25 estimate of needs. I'm fortunate to have by my side, um, as always, um, our CFO, Mr. Theodore Falk. And at this time, I will defer to him to begin the presentation.
Good evening. I'm Patello, Vice Chair Atkinson, uh, members of the school board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're coming.
As we do at this time every year, we're, uh, giving you the breakdown of the superintendent's estimates of needs. Uh, it's my duty to go through to talk about the breakdown of how the operating budget is constructed. The slide you see before you talks about the operating budget. There are five funds that make up the operating budget. The largest being the general fund, which is the fund that manages the majority of the schools' day-to-day operations from our, from instruction, operations and maintenance, transportation, uh, all our attendance and health, all of the activities that we do. Uh, next, that's 78% of the budget. Uh, next, in, in order of percentages, the risk management fund, which is the fund that manages all of our health insurance, our benefits, and our risk management activities such as insurance, workers' comp for the school division. That is 9% of our total operating budget. Next is our grants fund. That encompasses about 8% of our budget. That mainly relates to federal, state, and other grants such as Title I, uh, special ed, and other grants that we get from other, uh, granting agencies. Next on the list is our cafeteria fund or food services fund, which is about 4% of our total budget. That manages and is a self-sustaining fund for all of the food services activities that we handle in our schools. And then lastly is our textbook fund. Um, the state gives us funds to buy textbooks. That's about 1% of our, our budget, and that's where we purchase all of our textbooks and materials for textbooks out of that fund. So, to give you a snapshot of those five funds, the total of all five of those funds is about $269.3 million. The general fund being the largest at $210 million, risk management at $23.6 million, textbooks fund at $2 million, the cafeteria fund is $11.2 million, and then the grants fund for recurring grants is $22.5 million. So, the rest of this presentation will really go into our general fund, which is the largest fund that we have and the fund that manages the day-to-day operations, as I've said. Um, you'll see that there's a, there's a difference between 23, 24, and 24, 25 of about $19.7 million. Uh, the 23, 24 budget was about $190.3 million. Our proposed 24, 25 budget is $210 million, which again, equates to a difference of $19.7. In putting together this budget, as Dr. Bracy will allude to in his comments, uh, we've taken into consideration the, um, um, input of stakeholders, school board members, internal staff, our community, as to what they wanted to see in that budget and what you wanted to see in this budget, and put that together as a budget of need. And so, this is what we deem as our budget of need this year, and again, a difference of about $19.7 million. Just wanted to give you an overview of, of budget, of what we're looking at from a governor's budget perspective, because that really kind of holds into where we start our budget process, because our biggest driver of funding is from the state. Um, 24, 25 is the first year of the governor's budget or the biennial budget and a re-benchmarking year, which means they update all the costs within this budget, uh, related to, um, costs over the years and to make sure that they're current, to make sure that we get appropriate revenue in that regard. Um, they make updates to our average daily membership, which average daily membership drives how much revenue you receive within your budget from the state. Sales tax is a big driver of, of the budget as well. They update those estimates, as well as schools get a lot of money from lottery proceeds. So, they update those projections for what we're doing and what we're receiving as well. One of the things that we talked about in January, but I wanted to reiterate, the local composite index is the school division or the locality's ability to pay for their schools. So, the higher your number, which the highest number is .8 in the, in the Commonwealth, that means you can fund more of your, um, uh, activities from a locality perspective. Ours is going down from .2413 to .2369. In a nutshell, what that means is we're eligible for more funding from the state in this budget if you compared it to the last budget. Local composite index drives how much the state will give, uh, localities, because localities with a high local composite index are deemed to afford more. Those that have a lower composite index deem that they can't afford as much. So, just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that as well.
And Mr. Falk, normally in a re-benchmarking year, it's normally when you receive more funding.
Yes, sir.
Uh, in most cases, but that's not our case with this year.
In the governor's budget this year, there was not the same level of additional funding within the budget that we've seen in the past. We've seen a lot more funding in the first biennial, first year of a biennial than what we see in this budget, as well as a lot more initiatives. So, really in the governor's budget, one of the, very few initiatives he had in there was a one-time, 1% bonus for SOQ-funded positions as of July 1st of 2024. That was really the biggest initiative in his budget for this first year of the biennial. Um, and so, but what you saw in his budget was there were a lot of reductions, such as sales tax going down. Reduction in enrollment means reduction in state support for schools. We had a statewide reduction in enrollment, which then rolled back the, the amount of money that the state had to put into funding for schools. One of the other things, and we'll see it here, last year, the, the General Assembly, um, eliminated the grocery tax, um, and then the hygiene products tax, which meant less funding in the sales tax, which meant schools were hit by that, uh, reduction. In the past, in the 23, 24, in this current year, they held us harmless for that revenue we lost. In this year, in the governor's budget, there's no proposal to hold us harmless. So, that is a loss of revenue, all things being equal, between the two years. So, that's why you don't see a lot of the money that we would see in the first year of a re-benchmarking year.
Are you taking questions at the end? So, we lost money or were not held harmless this time because of the elimination of the grocery tax?
Yes.
Um, and then also because of the decrease in enrollment across the state for, meaning less funding across the state? Okay, I just want to make that clear for the public. Okay, thank you.
So, here's where our budget revenue sources lie in our general fund. Uh, it is a grand total of $194,000, $194.9 million. Um, just to put that in context, that's about a 4.6% increase over the prior year. Um, much of that in the state funds and state sales tax funds together, they were about 4.4% of that increase. If you see here, state funds, uh, in total, account for $199 million, which is about 56% of our revenue in our general fund. Local funds, and that is a, uh, that fund, that, that's the same amount as last year, 63.7 million, which is 33%. We'll talk through that, uh, Dr. Bracy will in a little bit. Uh, state sales tax funds are about 10% at $19.1 million. Other funds, which are miscellaneous funds that we receive, a little less than 1%, 1.6 million. And then federal funds, which, uh, take into account impact aid and, uh...
Open the door.
...downstairs.
Other federal funding, it's about $650,000, which is about a little less than 1%. Um, like I said, really in the state funds, most of that increase is related to re-benchmarking and the small amount of funds that the governor put in for a 1% bonus. That was pretty much about it from a new initiative standpoint, from state revenue. Um, and just to keep in mind, from when we talk about either, uh, bonuses or raises, it's only SOQ-funded positions.
Right.
Which means it's not all positions within the school division that we're getting funded for from the state. So, if we give a bonus, raise, whatever, we have to make up that difference for those positions that weren't included in the state funding mechanism. So, again, $194.9 million as a budgeted revenue source, with about $4.6 million being the increase over last year's amount that we received in total. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bracy. He'll go into our initiatives.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Falk. I want to say from the outset that this will be the most aggressive estimate of needs that I've brought before this board in my nine years as superintendent. These are great needs and will need more local support than we've ever requested in the past. The reasons for this are many, and I will detail them more in our time together tonight. But ultimately, what you will see here, we have reached a critical mass in a number of areas of staffing and to take immediate action regarding compensation. My estimated needs, um, tonight is divided into, um, it's in three components, three main components. Instructional programming development, ongoing security and operational improvements, and of course, staff recruitment and retention needs. Let us begin with the instructional program development. As part of our strategic plan, Expedition 2025, purpose, promise, success, we're committed to providing educational opportunities to ensure all students achieve high academic growth. As such, I've included in this year's budget supports for our ongoing academic offerings, as well as necessary additions to in-demand programs for today's law. This is what you will see here. One CTE center. Um, as a board, as the board knows well, we're hard at work to renovate our former DAX center to be a comprehensive career and technical education center. We need a dedicated administrator to supervise and manage that building, the staff, and the program. We're launching our dual-language immersion program this year, which has been a board priority over the past three years. As presented previously, this will require an additional three teachers and three instructional assistants. To support the ongoing work of Starbase Partnership, including in the expansion with our CTE strands, I'm recommending upgrading the two current part-time Starbase staff members to two full-time teachers. To provide assistance to our science teaching teams in support of our SOL performance, the Department of Curriculum and Instruction needs one additional specialist for the division. Gifted resource teachers, we have, we have a thriving gifted education program, and we need to increase the number of gifted resource teachers by two to help meet the unique needs of our gifted learners throughout the division. Since 2023, we have worked to create an elementary and secondary model in the Department of Curriculum and Instruction. This, the, this is the last piece of that model, as the social studies office has just one coordinator currently. 504 program specialists, seeing an increase in 504 cases throughout the division. This position would, would be charged with ensuring we are effectively meeting the educational needs and accommodations of students with the disability, disabilities accordance with the Section 504 Rehabilitation Act. Elementary short-term suspension instructional assistance. We are also seeing increases in behaviors at the elementary level that are requiring out-of-school placements, including both short and long term. For short-term placement, we're working with an outside partner to house students who are out of school for up to 10 days to continue instruction. As such, this program will require three full-time staff members to deliver meaningful instruction and not to lose those days to absenteeism. Elementary long-term suspension, teacher and two instructional assistants. Similarly, we are working to develop within the division a site where students who are long-term out of school suspension placement can receive instruction. In order to support their learning, we need one teacher and two instructional assistants. One senior supervisor for performing arts, I'm recommending a new senior supervisor for performing arts to this year's budget in order to help meet the demands of both elementary and secondary music, theater, and dance programs. This will also help coordinate local, regional, and national student performances. Four speech and language pathologists. The school division currently has a staff of 17 speech and language pathologists to assist our students with special needs. We're seeing continued growth in students requiring speech services, which is why I'm requesting added four more positions to this office. Two middle school math coaches. Finally, Craddock Middle is the only one of our middle schools to have, have a math coach. In support, in an effort to support math instruction in our remaining two middle schools, I'm recommending two more math coaches. These positions have an estimated cost of $2.29 million. As we look into state mandates, also requiring instructional needs, I do need to point out, there are additional, these are additions to our general fund this year due to state requirements. Reading coaches, we have six reading coach positions added to our general fund, as the state determined that this year Title I funds can no longer pay for these roles, and that they are now mandated and classified as SOQ positions. Testing analysts, we have 13 analyst positions added to the, added, as the state told us, uh, told school divisions, counselors can no longer serve as testing coordinators for their schools, which has been our prior practice. ESL teachers, we have added two English and second language teachers in order to remain in compliance with state staffing for ESL students. These positions have an estimated cost of $2.2 million. Next, I will talk about our ongoing security and operational improvements. Just as our strategic plan outlines our commitment to high academic growth, it also has goal five, which states that we will ensure high-quality school facilities, specifically that they will be safe and inviting places for our students, family, staff, and community. We have been diligent in our safety and security efforts, including this year as we installed our weapons detection systems in all of our elementary schools, preschool centers, and administrative buildings, so the division had comprehensive screening sources. However, I'm resolute that we will continue to update and modernize our security plans to ensure we're in alignment with the best safety practices and staffing models to support our safe learning environments. As such, this year, I'm recommending the following school safety additions. School security officer position addition, I'm recommending increasing the contract term for all of our division school security officers from a 10-month position to a 10-plus-one, which will help ensure we have security staff on-site during high-traffic times ahead of the start of school for enrollment, open houses, and back-to-school nights, et cetera. Future's camera system, we're investing in the future's camera system throughout our facilities. This was done in consultation with the Portsmouth Police Department, as they have deployed this system throughout the city and will allow for seamless integration for their use. This will both streamline the response times for incidents and help make investigations more efficient. Athletic security funding increase, $125,000 dedicated to the security for athletic and after-school events. These security upgrades carry a total of $935,000. Of course, security and infrastructure is part of the ongoing operations at schools. From our auxiliary services and, and technology sides of the house, we've identified these additional needs for the upcoming year. Three additional full-time custodians, one dedicated for each preschool center, a full-time dispatcher for transportation services, additional support for building maintenance services, network penetration testing for cybersecurity threats, and automatic workflow dashboard to track email and phone data. We also have a host of upgrades to our technology systems to continue to support the division. These infrastructure costs are estimated to be $1.48 million. I will end tonight with where I started with my budget planning for this year, staff recruitment and retention. This is not a new endeavor. Again, I want to point to our strategic plan, which has goal three, recruit, develop, and retain highly qualified personnel to support student learning and employee engagement. Since before the start of this school year, I've highlighted employee pay, specifically teacher pay, as a desperate need for our division. I want to take this opportunity to expound on this so our public understands why this has remained our long-term priority. For so long, we've worked within our budget in order to stay as competitive as possible with regional divisions regarding compensation. We have mainly done this through annual raises, but no step increases to our salary scale. Our last step increase came via my first budget recommendation here, which went into effect eight years ago in 2016. This is what leads to pay compression for veteran teachers, because all employees receive raises. Those with additional years of experience are not compensated for their time and expertise. Let me show you what that looks like on our current teacher pay scale. On the first step in the salary scale is now a zero-to-six step. This means that a brand-new teacher with no experience in the classroom is making as much as a teacher returning to us with six years of experience. Meanwhile, other divisions have a narrow step and can follow and can allow for a more differentiated scale and can offer five, six, and seven-year veteran salaries that are thousands more than we can do. To complicate matters, as you see here, the difference between a teacher with no experience and one with 15 years of experience is just $3,907.56. Now, I also want to say, specific to teachers, that our administrative teams have gone through great lengths and through phenomenal efforts to find short-term solutions to keep instruction going in classrooms, as well as keep our students supported as possible. For example, despite the ongoing and proactive efforts of our human resources and recruitment work, we have not been able to fully staff our teaching positions in years. Currently, we have 825 full-time classroom teachers to fill vacancies. We have contracted additional staff, about four dozen in-person teachers, and another dozen virtual teachers. We have 89 long-term substitutes who serve as instructional facilitators in classrooms. Still, we have gaps. This year alone, we've seen more than 300 teachers who have covered classrooms on either day-by-day or a day-by-day basis, or, or taken additional blocks as part of their teaching schedule, meaning they lose a planning block in order to provide instruction to students. Whenever we have the opportunity to hold staff members and, and to show our staff members how much we appreciate them, you know, we tell them with our words. We've launched our entire Shining Light Award initiative this year to spotlight our staff. We give them time whenever we can, such as two weeks for one a break, or two instructional days off, the, at the last, last year, last school year, and we didn't, because we didn't need them for makeup days. We give retention bonuses when we have funds available. One such bonus has already been issued this year. However, we've reached a point now where those gestures ring hollow. As the board knows, we contracted with a research firm to help us break down comparable salary study data from neighboring and similarly-sized divisions in the state. They also are working with us to build new pay scales that will provide a better reflection of compensation based on years of experience. I had every intention tonight to provide you the costs of a first-year implementation of the firm's recommendations to adjust teacher pay, to teacher pay on these new scales. However, in our continued discussions with the firm and ongoing reviews into our data, it became clear that this would be premature. I simply cannot in good conscience rush the solutions that we have recently believed would not ultimately fully repair our compensation issues. After speaking with staff, the firm, and board leadership, I'm recommending a different pathway at this time. We will allow the firm to complete its comprehensive recommendations for all employee groups and pay scales through the end of this year and ahead of the start of the 24-25 school year. Based on our preliminary review, it's estimated that this could cost up to tens of millions of dollars. From there, I will provide those recommendations to sitter leadership and request the support of that plan. So, you may be asking, so where does that leave our teacher staff today? While this is a change in how we're moving forward, it's not a retreat from my plan to address pay compensation. Tonight, I'm recommending, uh, 7% raise for all our PPS employees. This is the largest raise that I proposed during my near-decade-long tenure here in Portsmouth. Other divisions are recommending average raises of in the 2% to 3% range. I've asked Mr. Falk, I've asked, as Mr. Falk has shared, we did not see the level of support in the governor's budget that we were expecting for the first year in the biennial. Specifically, there was no money allocated for, for teacher or any other school staff raise. However, there are proposals from the General Assembly to provide some funds for raises, but we have no guarantees of that. As such, I'm estimating the cost of a 7% raise as $10.25 million. Let me also point out, this cost is higher due to the compounded impact of the state-mandated mid-year 2% raise we gave in January to all employees. We took care of that increase in-house, unlike other divisions, asked for no additional, asked for no additional funds from the city to deliver this on time to staff. Undoubtedly, this is the biggest price tag that we have for your consideration today. However, it's not my only recommendation regarding compensation. I also believe that it is more that we can do to address our ongoing retention efforts. Also included in my proposal tonight is restructuring of roughly 20 division-level positions to better align them with the current K-12 division structures and titles. Not only do these changes best reflect the work that is being produced from these roles, it also addresses salary gaps in comparison to other divisions. We're fortunate to have an incredible instructional assistants who work for our division, who would be perfect candidates for teachers if they had access to licensure programming. This year's budget recommendation includes funds from Grow Your Own, from your Grow Your Own program, which would include increased pay for IAs who work to complete their licensure and can then work as full-time teachers for us once they've completed their programs. Next year, our HR department will continue recruiting initiatives that were successful this year, including continued contracting with international recruiters, as well as new teacher signing bonuses. These needs have an estimated cost of $2.6 million. All total, as you can see on the screen, in order to meet all the needs outlined in this proposal, we will need, we will require $15.1 million from the city. Again, this is based on what is currently included in the governor's budget. The number can change based on further action by the General Assembly. That said, I fully stand by this request. I shared with you from the beginning, this proposal is, is aggressive, however, it is also appropriate. We have, we had a theme this year for our division, building bridges, reimagining possibilities, a new era of excellence. I have challenged our leaders and staff to answer the call to excellence, not align obstacles to stand in the way of student success, but finding creative solutions to reach higher goals. Now, I'm issuing that same call to our elected leadership. We are, we are at an important, important crossroads in our division, where with the right investment at this crucial time, we have the tools to build and endure a pathway to excellence. I thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight, and I can address any questions you have at this time.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Um, and just to be clear, this will be in board docs.
Yes.
Folks, nice of the board to actually have access to that and look through it thoroughly. That's just, we're not voting on it tonight. We're just going to discuss it, review it, and once we leave here, we'll come back and we'll vote at our next meeting on that. But I do want to thank you, Dr. Bracy, Mr. Falk, and the entire staff for your work in putting together a very aggressive budget. Um, I did say, present your needs. Uh, don't think of, uh, what may happen or what may not happen. Present what we need.
Right.
And then we go from there. So, thank you for presenting your budget. And I am answering the questions without the Bracy at this time. I'm just going to go this way so we can get everything. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bracy, Mr. Falk. Um, I have a question regarding the, um, center that's going to house, um, students who have been suspended. So, are we already contracted with a, a center, or is that a part of the budget plan?
If we haven't contracted, we've, we've been in discussion, um, to look at a location to house. The piece that we're doing, we're just providing the staff that will be there to monitor the students. There's no cost for the facility.
Gotcha. So, if, so if, like, let's say, a church had, like, a program?
Yes.
We would be providing the instructional teacher or program into that particular church?
Yes.
So, so how would we, like, how are we advertise, how would we advertise that? What does that look like?
Well, once we put together all the pieces and we see that this is the direction that we're going, because we, we already have a, a plan in place that, that will be shared out at the beginning of the year, because if we start off, there won't be any students there.
Right.
But we will push that information out, like, at open houses, um, the teachers will send... The teachers will send correspondents home to the families to make them aware of, and it'll probably be somewhere written in our code of student conduct as well as options for suspension. You know, the goal of it is to have the students getting some type of instruction, you know, now that the chronic absenteeism piece is heavy in the accreditation model. You know, we want to do everything that we can to stay in front of those students and have them engaged, and so that will help us with our meaningful engagement with those students, and we won't take a hit by them not being in school. At least they will be receiving instruction. And if they do that, they're out of their homeschool, but if they're present with us, they're still counted as present.
Okay, that was my question. So they would be present? And then, the last question is, we would provide them transportation if they choose to sign up for this?
Yes, and meals would be provided to them as well.
Okay.
Now, I just want to piggyback on that. When I was a youth pastor at Grove, we had an out-of-school suspension program at that time that we partnered with the school division, so a church would be a great partner for it. But we received a grant at that time. Delegate John Joanna had got us a grant to hold the program, but that grant was taken out of the budget permanently. So I wanted to get this program back for a while, so I'm glad to see that in the budget. But meals were provided, transportation was provided, but more than that, they got that instruction during the day, and they weren't missing that when they were suspended. That was a...
I'm glad to see it. We'll be needing that. We need that back.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy and Mr. Falk. My question is concerning the casino revenues. So how is it that our composite index that you referenced, how did that go down, given the casino revenues that we have? And where are we in terms of those revenues, in terms of what's coming in? What can possibly come into the school division?
Okay, I'll take the LCI part. In the local composite index piece, that's two-years-old data, so that data doesn't encompass the current. So it's usually two-years-old, so that's why it did not, it went down, meaning we got more state revenue, because the casino revenues aren't included in that calculation right now. They will be in the next LCI calculation.
And like, any indication of where we are for this budget cycle in terms of what the casino, you know, the $15 million that we're requesting? How is that gonna be offset by any revenues that we've seen from the casino?
Well, we don't have any type of, I guess, we don't know how and where those revenue streams go. It was mentioned earlier in our liaison meeting by Board Member Schumate that we need to look into that possibility. I know the chair has had that conversation with me, and we're gonna formally, and that's something that he will talk with the board about, you know, make that request as part of the board. So that's something that's ongoing.
Yeah, because, I mean, when the casino was being proposed, that was like part of the bonus, that it was, you know, supposed to be able to help fund the school system.
Ms. Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Falk, Dr. Bracy. My question was regarding the last piece, the employee compensation study, and you mentioned that we were gonna wait for the study to be completed and look at the number across all staff in December sometime? Is that correct?
Well, prior to that, you know, we just approved it at our last board meeting. So we've been working with them, and they've been working trying to crunch numbers. I think our initial goal was to try to at least have something in place for the teacher group.
Right.
But, you know, they worked on it, they tried, but it wasn't, they didn't get to the point that we felt comfortable with.
Knowing the number to bring it to the right step. Is that correct?
Yeah, they were still working, trying to put all those numbers together, and that wasn't something that Mr. Falk and I felt comfortable with at this time, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, he and I and Ms. Duran have been working, you know, with the firm, trying to make sure that they capture everything that we want, and it wasn't there. So I didn't want to bring it to you, not fully complete. So what we're gonna do now is allow them to complete the full employee pay scale. And once that's completed, whenever that is, we'll have a conversation with city leadership. We'll take that back to the liaisons, you know, that was one of the agenda items today. And the sooner we start that discussion, the better, so that everybody will have time and they'll know what's expected, and we don't want to just dump it on them at this February meeting to say, this is what we need. I'm anticipating, you know, maybe, and I'm guessing now, another two, three months or so, or about early fall, it should be completed, and that's something that we can start having a conversation with the city about.
Are they, is the study gonna include compressing the steps too, so that it's not zero to six? And that, okay, so it's gonna compress the timeframe there?
That's what we, that's what we was asking them about, you know, looking at the compression between the steps and, you know, just looking at how deep the scale goes in terms of the number of years.
Okay. Now, I'm glad to see the 7% proposed pay raise, 'cause 1% is basically zero, almost 0%, like, that was not...
A joke.
Yeah. So, but my question with the raise versus how soon that study will be done is balancing that dollar set aside or dollar request with putting it towards whatever that end number might be, so.
Yes.
Okay.
And if we are fortunate enough to give the 7%, we know that when the firm finishes the study, it's gonna be more than a 7%. You know, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a large number.
Okay.
And that's something that we will work with the city and make a recommendation on a phase-in period of that. So this will actually go towards it, and it really will reduce probably the larger number that we would see. And, you know, that's how I would hope, that they would see this.
Okay.
Because we knew going into it that that would be a large, that would be a larger number. If we had that tonight, you know, when you saw that number, you'd probably be like, wow.
Okay. All right, that makes sense if it's eventually gonna go towards that anyway.
Right. And the 7% is not a surprise. You know, ultimately, the state this year, we ultimately had a 7% increase.
You should've.
A 5% at the beginning of the year, then they added the 2% in January. So we're just trying to maintain where we are.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. So, thank you, Dr. Bracy and Mr. Falk. So the only question that I have, 'cause I'm big on explaining acronyms for me, so with the SOQs for the public, can you just break that down and what that looks like? 'Cause it just sounds like that could be teachers, but we all know a little different. So just so everybody's clear on what that is.
Sure. Brand new. So basically, SOQ stands for Standards of Quality. That is the minimum standards for school divisions to staff their buildings based on state funding. So, I'm trying to think of a good one, but there are standards for each type of thing. So they say you're supposed to have one principal if you have a certain number of students, but they're minimum standards, which means most schools have to go above and beyond those standards to staff a building. Based on the standards, you would need a principal in every building. And I believe in our SOQ, I think they fund maybe 2.5 elementary APs, because you don't need APs according to the SOQ standards. But we know we need APs in every elementary. So that's what the Standards of Quality mean.
Gotcha. Yes, sir. Absolutely, yeah. We're not even touching the surface.
Right.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Ms. Thomas?
Sure, thank you.
You've been waiting.
Look, I pulled out the pen because I'm like, and I'm gonna piggyback off, thank you, gentlemen. Let me start off with the thank you. You know, it's always, it's an eye-awakening time of year, and you guys have been putting the work in since we started the school year. You know, it was opening day, and then it was opening budget season. So just so, I just want to say thank you for the work that you've done and the work that you continue to do with us. But I want to piggyback off Dr. Whitaker to start, because we did talk about the casino. We talked about revenues in our liaison meeting, and one of the things Board Member Schumate and I talked about at least a year and a half ago when we started picking up our liaison meetings again, was a dedicated revenue source just to our CIP program, not to come into our general budget, but to start building a CIP program, because we know, for those of us that have been here, our CIP has not been funded over time. So how do you get major projects done if you don't have the dedicated funding? So that's one of the things that we've talked about as well. But then to go into that next one, what can we glean, if any? And, you know, we used to have an attorney that said if I had a magic eight ball, you know, I'd have all the answers. But what does our local composite index look like when we get a new benchmark with casino revenues, because our local composite index is gonna go up, meaning that we get less help from the state? So we've got to be sure that we're, you know, and, you know, I know you don't have a magic eight ball, Mr. Meekins isn't here with his magic eight ball, but I think we need to be aware that, you know, we're two years behind in this rebar, in this re...
Benchmark.
Benchmarking, thank you. And so when we get the next one in two years, that composite index has a real way to jump, meaning that our locality is gonna have to pick up more, you know, more of the bill, if you want to say it that way, for us. So I think that's something that we need to be aware of and that we need to, as we go through this. I want to go back to the off-site, and I'm calling it the off-site ISS. I don't know what else to call it, because that's what it sounded like to me. You know, we've got to get kids out of the school, we've got to get them out of an environment, we've got to put them somewhere. Is there a way that instead of contracting out with a facility, we do have some elementary schools that have lower capacity than others. Is there a way that maybe we can keep them in-house and create a facility that's within our school system, making it easier for transportation, making it easier for attendance, when you have schools that are already, you know, doing breakfast and lunches for our kids, to just do it that way? So just a thought on that one. I do agree there has to be a plan, there has to be a way to refocus and work with those kids on a one-on-one basis to change those behaviors. So I do agree with it. I would just like to see if we can look within our four walls before we go outside. And then the last one is the 7% pay increase. You guys, we know that we have teachers on the higher end of our years, our most senior teachers, that are leaving because it is a $12,000, $15,000, $18,000 pay jump from one city to the next. Is there a way that we can look at the 7% and maybe tier it for seniority? And not, you know, and I hate to say that I don't want to give a 7% across the board, but I do want to give, you know, preferential treatment is too strong of a word, but I do want to pay homage to those that have been here with us that are stuck in this pay compression, that if maybe we take that $10 million and maybe reshuffle it and give a tiered system where the percentages may look different based off of your years, to kind of go, to help offset some of the paying compensation study that's gonna come, because we know that's all gonna come, and we use that as a, you know, retention, because we do want to keep the most senior teachers, and we do, we do need that seniority, and we do need that wisdom and their dedication here. And so I would like to just take a look and see what we can do if that's something that the board wishes, but I would prefer if we had a tiered raise system at this time. Thank you.
I got a follow-up.
Yes, Dr. Bracy. So just to be clear, out of the, and piggybacking on Dr. Whitaker's question, there's no percentage that comes to the school system that we know of from the casino money?
No, we don't.
So out of the $15 million, we don't know what's gonna come to the school system, if any?
No, we don't have any type of agreement, no formula that allocates anything that's earmarked for the school division, no.
Okay. And just from looking at the budget, I just want to know where we are on, like, the K-8 school. I know we've been talking about it for years, and it's been on the budget and off the budget. So where are we at with that?
Well, that was an agenda item today in the liaison meeting, and Mr. Hugh, he's still back there, yeah. He brought, he mentioned that as one of the agenda items. So that's something that I know the city, he shared with us, that they are looking into in trying to make sure that that doesn't get lost, because that is and still is our priority as far as traditional schools go. That is the one that we need most, the K-8 school. So he's looking at, he and the council, you know, they're looking at trying to establish some type of revenue stream that will put us in a position to start moving with that, with maybe design with that. So it's being discussed, so it's not lost, based on our conversations today, and I'm sure in the upcoming months, we'll have more information as far as what the city is doing.
That they, are we still on the Willett Hall site, or we're, we're still not even there?
No, I don't, we don't have a location, you know. We don't. I mean, that's what we were told it would be, but we don't have any, we don't know for sure now.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bracy.
Ms. Schumate?
So just to kind of provide a synopsis on the casino conversation, as Board Member Sarah Duncan-Hayne stated, we have been in discussion for years at our liaison meetings with council about that concern. We have suggested earmarking, we have suggested doing a formula-funding piece to that, we have suggested a small percentage, depending on whatever their particular revenue may be. The initial conversation that we had years ago, there was nothing. It was kind of like a deer in a headlights. The next conversation we had, it was, well, let's put a pin in it. So, and I'm stating this because we have a meeting with them on Monday. This is also a discussion that we're going to bring up, and we should bring up again, because for some reason, it seems as if this subject is taboo, as if we don't know that the casino is up and running and making money. So that is a conversation that we need to have, because it's important, because we keep talking about all of these CIP projects, and as I stated to some of the council members earlier, the problem is, we can come up with all of these different projects that we would like to have, there's no continuity. And we also can't write up a contract stating that, hey, this is what we would like to do, because with each and every new city manager and with each and every new council person, they have the autonomy to change that once they are elected. So that is somewhat problematic at this point, is almost as if we need to go out there and build a foundation somewhere. We don't have a location, but somewhere, just so that we can say that we have a foundation, we can't stop this project. That seems to be the only resolution at this point. So I'm saying that because we can have these projects, we have these conversations, but until we can get some type of continuity, we're gonna keep having this conversation and these concerns, because we're gonna get a new manager, and not saying that we are, but say we get a new city manager and they don't like that plan. Say we get new council members, and majority of them don't like the fact that we would like to have a new school. So now we are back to square one, which it seems that we are back to square one quite often. So the conversation has been had about the funding from the casino, which we have gotten nowhere. And the conversation, again, for the K-8 school started years ago, but that soon disappeared once we got a new city manager and new council members. So that's why we, to this day, do not have a location. It was Willett Hall.
Yep.
That is no longer ours. And so we will have to, again, start from square one and find a new location as to where we would like to place said K through eight school. So I'm just mentioning this to the public, and for everyone who don't know, this is an ongoing conversation. We have not forgotten about certain things that we talked about years ago. We have not bought up promises and not kept it on our end. You have to understand that it's a revolving door sometimes, and then some people get amnesia. And so we have to brain this up as many times as we possibly can. So it would be wonderful if we could actually get some type of funding for us to, to get these projects done and, you know, some type of continuity to make sure that those projects are completed. So I just wanted to make that clear.
And I just want to interject second before we keep going. With the casino funding, I've been talking to Dr. Bracy. I've also had conversations with leadership from Bristol who also have a casino where they help fund their schools. And in the spirit of fairness, as a board, we have now officially made a request for a portion of the casino funding. So what I would like for us to discuss at our next meeting, at our work session, was to discuss what would that request look like, to present to the cities for them to actually ponder over and let them make a decision on our official request. I know we've had conversations. In, in most districts where they actually have casinos, the school division will make a proper form of request of what they want from casinos, say a funding in the city council. Board of Supervisors will make an official decision on that, once you do that. As far as the school, our CIP plan never changed. The school is, is still on the plan along with other projects. But again, we don't have control of our own CIP, so that still remains in the hands of the city. But it's not like we've forgotten about it or we don't require it anymore. But it is on our CIP plan that is in possession of the city. For that, we update that plan every year as well to include other projects. So when we have the new bleacher systems in the schools and the new basketball floors and the roofs and HVACs, those are all in our CIP plan that's being checked off. So it is updated every year when we do present that.
Chair, that, when you mentioned CIP, it reminded me from our Budget and Finance Committee meeting. I think we had talked about looking, it was presented, the CIP, most recent CIP priorities, I think, was presented to us. You mentioned a few months ago or?
No, so every, before every budget season, we, we go through our CIP and we go through our finance meetings as well.
Right, and I think I had mentioned in our finance meeting, I wanted to see it again against what we have been kind of checking off.
Right.
And so I still want to see that. And also, in addition to the new K-8 school, just the funds from the casino or from city council that designate for even some maintenance that needs to be done to some of our existing schools as well.
Right.
I think I wanted to see that, where those things were falling as well. Thank you.
And you remember when we, they presented, we have a priority list?
We do.
I just wanted to see the list, yeah.
And what I wanted to add to that is some of the things on our CIP plan, our capital improvement plan, we've actually been able to do with end of year, we've been able to do with ESA funds, with federal grant funds that have been checked off. But when you're talking about a new school, before COVID, you were talking 45, 55 million dollars. After COVID, you're looking at a new school cost of about 85 to 90,000 dollars on the low end of things right now. So even if we, even if we talk about a, a dedicated revenue source from the casino right now, that's not in the short run going to be enough to, to get us over that hump. It's going to be enough to get land, it's going to be enough to do your A and E, it's going to be enough to do your traffic studies and your environmental studies that are going to have to happen. So while the casino money is a great start, if we can get it, we also need true dedication of funds from city council, whether it's grant funds, whether it's whatever, to go into that to get us to where we, we asked to be for a while, so.
Yeah, and, and that's why I was actually partially happy that the compensation study wasn't rushed just for teaching staff. I, I'd rather do it for everybody at one time. All of our staff, they're valued the same.
Absolutely.
And they all deserve to have that compression address for all of their salaries. And it's not that we're, we're going to ask city, hey, we need 40 million dollars, let's give it to us. No, but I think by doing it at one time, it gives us a chance to strategically plan how we can make that happen, you know, over some years or however long it's going to take, so.
And, and understanding too, that once we do this pay and compensation study, the extra money that comes from council for that is not a one-time shot. That is a dedicated budgetary piece year over year because we can't take salaries back, you know. So that is, that is the other piece with this pay and comp study is that it's not a one-time shot in the arm. This is a dedicated year-over-year budgeted expense now for council.
And the only other piece I wanted to add, because I, I thought I heard Councilman Hughley hit the floor when that 15 million came up. Seriously, the governor's budget only provides that one percent bonus. Right now, in the House and Senate proposals, they're anywhere between three and 3.9% for a raise salary increase. So the 15 million would actually presumably probably go down if those, if one of those ones are approved. So this is what they're proposing as is in the governor's budget, that's all we have to go back right now. But, so that number is 15 million now, but it could presumably go down if the House or Senate budget is approved. I just want to throw that out there.
So is that three percent going to be just for SOQ or for everybody?
It's always just SOQ, always. And the other thing was that, I think it was misspoke, so they, they held us harmless in our current budget year.
Right.
But in the new budget, they did not. That's another reason why the budget request is higher as well. And the state mandate to move all those positions from Title I to the general fund is going to cost about 3 million dollars. So it's, it's, it's an unfund demand that we have to cover, so. Our student representative has a question, yes.
I have two questions.
Yes, ma'am, you can ask the minute you want.
The first is, I would just like clarification on when you were all were talking about the security measures, you all mentioned a camera system, what would that entail? Like what details are those?
The camera systems are linked to the, you've seen the, I don't know if you've been in the office and seen those panels of, yeah. So what we've done, we've installed cameras by the entryways. So that if, let's say, once you get screened and you go into the school and someone tries to let one of their friends in on the side door, as that door open alarm will go off and then the camera will immediately pop up where the SSOs can see exactly who it is and they can go directly to where they are. Those are what we're referring to being installed. Those were additional to what we've already had in place.
My second question is in regards to the off-site suspension center. Is it going to be focused strictly on the academics of making sure, you know, the children, when you get suspended, they're going to, you know, get caught up in their academics? Or is it going to have a more holistic approach, like not only focusing on the academics, but also helping get to the root issues of absences and suspensions?
Yeah, probably a little of, a little of both. I think the priority will be to make sure that when they go back into that building academically, you know, for those, let's say if it's nine days, that they're, they haven't missed any academic work. Because with these type of programs, it's, you're not going to have a, a full school day as you would, you know, if you were at your traditional, traditional school. You know, it may be a couple of hours shorter because you, we're not going to have the, the PE and all of those elective. It's just going to be focused on content.
Okay, I was just wondering because I feel it's important that you, you know, not only make sure they're caught up academically, but also stop those issues before they, you know, take root and then continue to persist in things like high school and higher education.
One of the other things that it just hasn't been discussed yet in the, in the group, well, one of the components is to put together a toolkit for our kids so they will get some socio-emotional, I don't want to call it therapy, but they're going to get some socio-emotional services. They're going to get a toolkit on how to deal with these behaviors because one of the things that we found out is when they're, get suspended from school and go home, they come back the same child. So what we're trying to do is when they get suspended from school, they'll go to a, a location, they'll get their academics, but they'll also get a toolkit in order to help them so they don't have to come back. So those are the two or three main things that we're working on.
And something that we did when we had the project at Grove is that we actually partnered with Hampton University and they provided student mentors who were actually psychology majors and counseling majors to actually do peer mentoring with the students during the day for certain portions of the day as well. So that's something we can actually maybe look into to see if they still wouldn't provide that. And that was no charge for those services either for that, so that addressed your question. We're like a minute late, but I do want to make sure, do you all have any questions in reference to the calendar that was presented at our last meeting? We pretty much had extensive conversation on it, but tonight we actually will be voting on the calendar. That's located in board docs as well. And I also wanted to mention just a few things I knew were of importance to you all. We had our operations and technology meeting yesterday. And just to reinforce that, many projects have been completed at the schools as far as the restroom renovations and security services. Digital, digital mapping is now complete for all schools. So if there's ever any safety issues, we do have digital mapping set up, that, that project's been completed. One thing I want you all to know ahead of time before it's announced, Chartway Arena will be charging parking this year for all schools and all graduations. So notice will be sent out to parents to let them know months in advance that it's going to be a $10 parking fee for graduations here that's being charged by Chartway.
Is it a flat fee or is it like a by-the-hour?
It's per car, it's $10. Per car, yeah. So this is one to make, this is one to make sure, I guess they figured they need to make more money off of these graduations. Everybody's having them there, so. I just wanted you all to know before that actually got sent out because you're going to send out ahead of time so that parents would know, they'll give them months in advance notice for that. Also, there's going to be a tier change in the elementary schools. So as you know, for the last 10 years, certain schools have been considered late schools and some have been considered early schools. So they're going to be fair about it and kind of mix them up now so that those that have been considered late schools now get to be an early school and vice versa. So, because it's really been a one-way street for the last, how long they've been doing it.
At least 10 years.
Yeah, and that's been unfair, so they're going to go ahead and give other schools a chance. Right.
When your buses are short, those late schools, some of them teachers don't get out of there till 5:30.
Not really confusing, just some schools get out earlier, some get out later.
Right.
Now they're going to reverse it so that those that are getting out later will now get out earlier.
All right, is Douglas Park still staying with middle?
No.
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 Well, Churchman Elementary had just switched within the last year. They were late and they switched to hour earlier, so they, it's going to be back late?
That's up to them, but I think if it's a recent change, I don't think they're changing. These are the schools that have been stuck.
They have been stuck in that schedule for a while, okay.
And have to wait to 4:30 for buses and all that, you know, so. So I just wanted to make sure you all got that information before that's announced as well so you all will already be ahead of the game on that. And if we don't have any other questions, we're about four minutes late now to get out front. Oh, I'm sorry, we do have one. I didn't say that either.
What, it's up here?
Okay.
You see what?
I'm going to ask that our vice chair, it is. That our vice chair would take us in, would take us in the closed meeting. Uh, motion's been made, you have a second? All right, you have a second, uh, roll call vote?
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Boone?
Yes.
Ms. Vitril?
Yes.
Ms. Hines? Shoemake? Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
We're now into a closed meeting.